I'm going to call the meeting of the Roxbury zoning board of appeals, the public hearing to order at seven oh. Whatever.
Seven oh two.
Seven oh two. And I would like the members to identify themselves and that Falkenburg Chair.
Margaret Ryder member.
Karen Copte member.
Nancy Schoenholdt member.
Steve Meyer Oldman.
My turn. Sue Scott.
Okay, I'm going to move up Sue Scott into Bill Davies' position for tonight. And so now we've opened the public hearing. And Julie, would you read the legal notice?
Yes, let me. Let's share that. Okay, so this was published in Voices on February first. And on February eighth, the Roxbury zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Thursday, February sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three at seven P M. On Roxbury Town Hall to consider the application of, and the first one is for Lauren's Alpazon and James Stanton. For thirteen Schoolhouse Road, variance to build twenty-four by twenty-four garage near northern driveway entrance with the front setback ten feet from property line. Referred as zoning regulation variance from section three point ten point two. And then Mark Drundle and Chad Conway assessors map seven lot seventeen located at two River Road. Case file two thousand twenty-three zero zero nine two. Variance to install a generator within the side setback of a non-conforming dwelling. Refer to zoning regulation variance from twenty point eighty-seven and twenty point seventy-nine. At this hearing, interested parties may be present and oral and written communications will be accepted. The documents related to these applications can be viewed at the town of Roxbury website. Then that Falkenburg Chair person, zoning board of appeals.
Thank you, Julie. Now, just, I know you got this in the notice from Julie, but the first hearing. We're postponing until March because the abutters weren't notified. So tonight we have only the one hearing. And do we have? Verification of the notice to abutters?
Yes, that was sent in very early.
Okay. Great. All right, then, Mark and Chad, which one of you is going to present?
I will, Chad.
Okay. Floor is yours.
Okay, so over Christmas, when it got very cold. And the power went off for that period of a few days over the holidays, I think we got power back on Christmas Day.
Christmasy.
Christmas Eve.
Something.
Christmas Day. For the first time in two years, our pipes froze. We've never had a generator. Our policy was always just to get the car drive back to New York if the pipes froze or we lost power. But that really frightened us because if the pipes had burst and they froze in two different spots, so we were without water, which was not really that big a deal. But when the the power came back on, the pipes were frozen. We had to wait until they defrosted on their own, which is what we were advised to do. And the pipes came back and nothing burst and we were fine. But it scared us because those two things, that cold and a power off at the same time had never occurred before. So we asked around. The way to avoid it is to have the generators where the power goes off, the heat stays on, the house stays warm, and the pipes don't freeze. We had the locally recommended contractor for the generator come over, scope the property, nothing on the lot is non-conforming. And the spot that's indicated on this application is the spot that he chose as the most conducive spot, given the restrictions of the property. So that's where we are.
Okay. Questions from the. I just want, because many of our members are relatively new, I just wanted to. Just point out that you already have three variances on the property. So this would be the fourth, I just want the Z B A to know this would be the fourth variance on the property.
Right. That's done on the property requires a variance because it's like a non-conforming lot. And from every direction, we can't meet any setback.
There's nowhere on the entire, just under an acre property, that's thirty feet from anything.
So. Nothing, nothing that you chose to do.
Well, that's, that's true. That's true. But the original house, as the day it was built, was still within the variance in three directions.
Understood. I just want the Z B A to know. Okay, questions from the, from the Z B A?
What is the hardship?
Frozen pipes.
Well, I think that also our house is not usable, obviously, and as everyone that is probably here. Experiencing during that last freeze-out that we had or during Sandy or other storms that we've had. That when, you know, you have no electricity, you know, I guess people go to other public areas or I guess, I don't know what everyone does. You know, but we're trying to protect our home. We know we've made a fairly large investment into the renovation of our home. And in order to protect it from frozen pipes or, you know, an overflow of water. We'd like to have a generator so that we can continue to use our house while we're there.
So there's no, you're saying that even one foot extension beyond the house would be a non-conformity?
Correct.
Wait a minute.
Yeah.
Okay, I, I, I don't think that you've got a hardship here. I mean, everybody has to deal with frozen pipes. Have you looked into various ways of keeping your pipes warm or heating your house from the inside? Your generator is bigger than my generator, I can tell you. So I didn't have time to look, but I thought there's got to be a better way. I have some pipes that are wrapped, some could have their own charger. How much research have you done into the alternatives?
Well, I mean, we would like to be able to use our home and have heat and water. And not have to leave Roxbury to come back to the city and it be on our home be inhabitable.
And it may be our full-time home now, just to teach her.
I don't think that's what Margaret was asking. I think she was asking what other, what other alternatives have you looked at to heating your, to heating your pipes?
Well, I don't know. I don't know what alternatives there are when you don't have electricity.
You could have, well, there are alternatives, but tell me, so your hardship, I mean, you've had three variances. So have you got a sort of self-created hardship at this point? And then that you might be better able to answer that.
Self-created hardship.
I don't know how you self-create the weather affecting or a storm affecting.
It's not the same, not the same.
So, so, so there is, there is nothing, there is no place?
No, yes, we would.
Well. Yeah.
Yes. No place on the property. No place on the property that you could put this, it's five feet away from, from a window, but not in the, not in the. I mean, when I look at the, when I look at the, 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 the map of the property, it certainly, I mean, it might not please you aesthetically where it would have to be. But, but it sure looks, when you look at the map, that there, there are plenty of places where you could place it five feet away from the dwelling and not be in the setback.
But five feet away from the, from the dwelling is within thirty feet of the road. That's the problem.
On all three sides unless we put it in our front yard.
Well, put it in your front yard.
Well, we're still not thirty feet. We can't get thirty feet from the road or that to the back, to the stone wall where the pool is.
There's no, there's no place around that.
No place that's thirty feet.
What is to the right of the house? What is that? My drawing is so vague, it's really hard to see, but it looks like there's a fairly large expanse of land to the right of the house. Is that, am I seeing this correctly?
There's not. There, the road, if you look where the road is, the house and the pool are, are maybe fifteen feet from one another.
Looks like a lot more.
It looks like more, but that's not correct. This, this drawing does not show the, the addition that was, that was done. Through it four years ago.
Okay, then you have to give us, you have to give us an accurate drawing.
Yeah, I mean, looking, looking at this, it looks like there's a fair amount of area that you could accommodate the generator. Without putting it into the setback next to the road.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
Would you like to come over and look around and ask?
Sure. Yeah.
Well, I think you had room for a pool where you could have had a generator, but you put it in a pool, so that counts, I think, as a self-created hardship.
No problem, no problem.
Not a problem.
We won't do a generator.
We won't do a generator.
If that's, you know, it's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, we're, we're kind of in a tight spot to, to have a, a structure put into the setback. And because of, because of the state laws, you know, we're just, we're just trying to help you find another place to put this.
But we, I did ask, I mean, if someone wants to come over and suggest a spot, we'll put it in that spot.
But you want, I mean, we're going to put it on our, in our front yard, I guess. And is that, that's where, okay.
Okay.
No way, is your front yard, no, 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 hang on, hang on.
Our front yard is, it's not, the, the generator would not be thirty feet from River Road. Okay, so there's no way to do that. There's no place to put it, whether we go.
I'm looking, I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the, towards the other side away from Weller's Bridge Road. On the, on, on the other side of the property in this drawing, it, it looks like, what, what's, what's there?
Where the barn is, where our garage is.
You're, what, our front door is not facing Weller's Bridge or River Road, the front door.
You're, you're not answering my question.
I don't understand your question.
Okay, Julie, would you just show, were you, yeah, right, right in this area here, what's, what's over there?
That's a very steep hill, and that's our only abutter is, his house is there right across that line at the edge of the property. That's our abutter. This is a very steep incline. That's a hill.
And, and it's about, I don't know, six or seven hundred feet from where it would connect to the electrical panel.
Yeah, that's, that's, I'm sorry, but that's your problem.
Yeah, no, I understand that. I'm just saying. But. I don't know how they would even trench that.
Well, that would, they would have, if, if that's the only place it can be, then they would have to figure out how to trench it.
We have to put it someplace with, and refile the application without asking for a variance or not do it, so.
Um, is, is, is this your garage to the left? The drawing is very vague. It's hard to see.
I would say, would you actually say what each building is?
Well, I understand, I understand that there are buildings that are not on this drawing.
No, there are no, everything is on the drawing.
There are only two buildings, a garage and a house. That other thing is the pool.
Which one is the pool?
Okay, is there any area near the pool where the generator could fit?
The, not that would be thirty feet from Weller's Bridge or thirty feet from River Road. I guess there.
Okay, so, so. What's the farthest in you can get? Out of the setback? And in, in, in other words, where can you, it seems to me that where you're citing it, I understand why you would want to cite it there. But that's, that's pretty far out. There are places that are far.
I don't know. What do you mean that it, there, it's pretty?
They think that we could put it here or here or like there. Like, just, it only has to be five feet from the house, I mean, you know. But, yeah, but that's what we keep coming back to the same thing because we're looking at the space, thinking, okay, we can put it right dead as far away from everything as possible in the middle. But that's, there's no way that that's thirty feet from Weller's Bridge.
Behind the pool is not thirty feet from Weller's Bridge?
Oh, no. And that's our property line. It's not anywhere near that. And it's, and it's a very steep hill.
The back, the, I guess this is the pool, but. So is this your front door? I, I really can't tell which one.
Where the, where the cursor is now is the house. The biggest thing on here is the pool. And the other thing.
Oh, oh, oh. I, I thought that was the house. See, I can't, I can't see anything. I thought that was, so the pool is much larger than the house.
They're about the same size.
So, so you already have a variance to, for the pool and the pool house?
Yes.
Yes.
So.
So, so.
The Z B A.
What was, so why don't you, why don't you put the generator near the pool house or, or? Why don't you get as far, as far away as you can out of, away from the setback line?
Okay, so I guess what's going to happen here is we're just going to have to go back, have the guy come back and try to find some place on the.
It, yeah, he walked the property and it's like impossible and even the amount. To put it on that far side.
Everything to the, where the garage is and the pool, everything that sort of diagonal line up is a very steep hill up to the abutters houses at the top of the hill. But it's very steep. It's like a forty-five degree angle all the way up there. So he discounted everything on that side, was trying to get thirty feet. Guys, you're not going to be able to put this thing, you know, thirty feet from the road. So that was the spot he chose, but.
Well, you know, I think as Margaret said, there's only so much that this property can accommodate and we've.
But we're trying just to do a small generator. I mean, I'm willing to do as small as possible just to keep the house running.
Is there, may I ask, is there any other technology where there could be a generator in the basement or a generator wherever? You know, because some of them are battery run. They don't have to be necessarily propane run.
Or you get a portable generator.
I'm sorry?
Or a portable.
Yep.
I think, I, I think what we're saying is that, that. We're not sure you've explored all the other alternatives.
Okay.
And I would like to just add, add one more point. I think the pool and the pool house, I hope you can squeeze it in there somewhere. That is a self, I believe, and we should double check, that's a self-created hardship. You can't go there because you put something there. It's, it's not that the land wouldn't allow you to go there, it's that you've already put something there. So that's something to keep in mind. And just that's sort of my first thought, and maybe it's a wrong thought, but I would keep that in mind.
Okay, but we did put the pool there. So how do we, how do we resolve this? All right, so are you saying that we have to take our pool out and put a generator in there?
Nobody's telling you to take the pool out. What we're saying, what we're saying is that you're, that you're trying to cram a lot. Onto a very small piece of land. And that we have. Um, three times now granted you a variance, and so now you've covered the parts of the lot. Where theoretically. You might have been as far away from the, farther into the setback. And that's, that's, those are your decisions. I mean, we didn't make those decisions for you.
Hundred percent true. And we, and we'd heard other people had generators, we've lost power of years. It never became a concern to us until Christmas, when two things happened at the same time that put our house in, in danger of serious, serious damage. That's why we're here. We had, we had no interest in the generator before this new circumstance of this past Christmas when the pipes froze. So yes, it's new information for us. It was a new experience for us, and now we're just trying to protect our, our house with the new information. But you're quite right, over the years, we never, we're interested in doing this. It wasn't until we had the situation that we thought, oh my God, our house is going to be, you know, if the pipes burst, we're going to be, have a major, major problem. But understandable, I understand everything that you're saying.
This is not, the problem is wanting a generator is not, it's not unique to, to this lot. Many people are discovering the same problem that you're discovering.
We can't put one in.
Just do, do investigate the alternatives to keeping your pipes from freezing. I, I don't think you've looked at the entire market.
How just, what about us being able to actually live there and survive there?
Well, I get, there are alternatives that people live with, such as, I don't know, I started to look at the portable generators. But there are alternatives. I haven't heard you discuss any of them in terms of keeping your pipes warm and, and surviving and not having property damage. And that's my impression, but I also, I don't think you've actually looked at it.
Are there, are there other people here who do not have a generator?
I don't. I'm gonna, I, I, I don't, I don't know what that has to do with.
Well, there is, you know, how do you, what do you do as we all live in the same area?
Yes, and people have, and people have put their generators.
But maybe just what, what you do if you don't have a generator. What do you do? How do you, what do you do?
I have a wood stove.
In the past.
Okay.
But you could, but I know a lot of times, there's a, there's insulation that can be put around pipes. It's like a rubber, poly something.
Okay.
Other options for saving the pipes and the, and the house. We, we, I don't know what the formality is, but we'll just withdraw this application for the generator. We've gone twenty years without one. We'll figure, we'll go another twenty years without one.
Well, why do you say that?
Well, also talk to your contractor about alternative sites to explore every possible option.
We did.
There's probably a lot of new things out on the market now too that are the, are potential alternatives. That some of us don't know maybe that much about because we've already done what we've done.
So it's not our job to find the alternative. I think our job is.
How do I withdraw?
Is to say that you need to explore, you need to explore all, you need to explore all the alternatives. And. Speaking for myself, I think. You know, there are, there are places that are further away from the road and the setback lines than the place you've got it now. I mean, you've got it smack up against Weller's Bridge Road, which I understand aesthetically might be the best place for it. But I think there are other, you know, if we were to do this, there are other places that encroach less than where you have it. And where you already have the variance.
What is, could, I can't, because I can't read the map very well, what is the building that looks like it has a driveway?
That's the garage.
That is the garage. Does that have windows?
Yes, it has windows.
But could it be another place to maybe look as an option?
You can, well.
If you're determined to put it in a generator?
Well, it's, this, this, that our driveway is like twenty feet to the road there, not even.
Not even.
So. What about the back of the garage?
Door and window, the backside.
And that's, that's a very steep hill back there. I don't know if that plays into it or not, but when the guy looked at, came to look where to put it. Everything behind the pool and the garage is a steep hill up to somebody else's house.
The, um. I, I don't, I, I, I don't know this for certain, but I've been told that there are now generators that you're allowed to put right up against the house. So that would be, that would be another question to ask.
Yes, that, the thing about the houses, they do exist, but our house is so small that we don't have five continuous feet without a door or a window. That was the issue with that one. You couldn't put it against the house because that's at least five feet from.
Well, but you could, you could put it against the pool house.
Oh, over there, uh, is there?
Where the windows are, we can't.
No, that's, I don't think, yeah, I don't think, the garage is, it's a small building and there's, there's a door or a window on all, all four sides. So I don't think that's going to work either, but, but I don't want to waste any more of your time. It's, it's.
Do you want to withdraw? Did you want to continue it?
I don't think there's any point in continuing.
Yeah, it doesn't sound like there's any point.
We will, we want to withdraw it and we'll go back to the drawing board.
Okay.
Okay. Thanks for your time. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
All right, have a nice evening.
You too.
Okay, I guess that means I'm closing the public hearing. And opening up the regular meeting. And so let's identify ourselves again and that Falkenburg Chair.
Margaret Ryder member.
Karen Copte member.
Nancy Schoenholdt member.
That, sorry.
Two at once.
Okay, now, now it's my turn.
And I'm going to move up Sue to fill Bill Davies' position. Okay, so there's nothing to discuss under new business in terms of this application. And. I know that Julie, I'm, I'm on B, I'm on new business B now, and. I know Julie has, and Karen have sent us all a letter about the required training. And Julie, can you update us on what some of our, well, first of all, if, if people have questions about the requirement, this is a new requirement. Perhaps Julie can answer them and then tell us what we know at this point about our, about our opportunities. To, to get this training before the end of the year.
Right now, this has become something that's kind of evolving with the training. Yukon Clear is the number one resource right now that seems to be on top of it, that has started opening training opportunities. And they did have three training opportunities at the beginning of the month. One of the things you definitely have to take is a class on affordable housing. And the other two have to be in the land you scope. So, because all of you are members and alternates that as of January first of this year. You all have to complete your training by January first of two thousand twenty-four.
It is a four hours, Julie?
Yes, it is four hours.
Four hours for each unit or four hours?
It is not. It's just, it's just a.
It's a total of four?
It's a total of four. I can say best way to describe it is Kim Tester took a class, their first class at Yukon Clear was an hour and a half. So that gets figured in. So usually within three classes, you may end up with four and a half hours of training, but you will. Yep, hold on, let me turn off my mic. Baby, stop. So, technical difficulty, so.
So is Yukon Clear a, an online learning center?
It is an online learning, hold on one second. Um, I can't find my. I can't mute myself. Sorry, I've got the boys inside. Um, anyway, um, they are online and they did put out the link, excuse me, get over here. Come on. All right, we're sitting quietly, sorry. I'm going to have Julie to settle. So we're sitting, oh, um. The Yukon Clear is, and we're going to keep putting out the classes as we find out about them. So. the Yukon Clear is, and we're going to keep putting out the classes as we find out about them. So, um.
Yeah, my dad, by the way, if I may, that I watched the fair housing one today. And it was about an hour and 20 minutes, 15 minutes. And, but what they announced was like I had missed the one the prior week, that they're reposting those. So I assume you can still, see the other ones, you know, online from their site.
Probably will. Um, so as soon as you register for one and just let us know, we were kind of hoping they would send you a certificate saying you participated, but I think you probably got a confirmation you signed up for it. From what I understand, so, um, like I said, I'm sorry, Steve, what?
Can we send those to you?
Yes, send those to us and they will count toward your training.
Okay.
Julie, Julie, is it easier if we send them to you once we've completed them? So you've got them? All?
Yes, that, but even if you want to do it by class, because we need to track you guys and make sure that you're, you're, you're getting your classes in. But it's something that we'll keep sending you the links as we find out about what's available. Um, the way we're looking at it, Yukon Clear is probably the first that's very organized with this, but we anticipate other training opportunities will start to become available.
And, um, who's, who's P? On the screen?
Hi, Nana, it's Patrick Roy. I just was listening in.
Oh, hi, Patrick.
I've been on most of your meetings and I usually take my name off because I don't want to be a distraction. So.
Okay.
You're sitting on my, you're sitting on my front porch with me. I would turn the camera on.
Okay, well, it's very comfortable there on your front porch, so.
It's a beautiful night.
Karen, did you have a question?
I just was, uh, going to request to get Julie, would be kind enough to repost, um, the link to Yukon Clear?
Absolutely. I can send that out. We, I can resend that.
And I, I was about to say something about Patrick, so he can verify if I have this right. But my understanding is if, if there are any that have a fee attached to it, that the town is, the town will cover the cost.
You are absolutely correct.
Oh, otherwise it costs us to go?
Well, there, on some of the courses, there's a, there's another, uh, program that's being offered that they're $45 a course. And if you just hang on to that and we'll submit it as a regular, um, petty cash kind of thing, we'll just cut you a check for it. So you'll be completely reimbursed.
Thank you.
I mean, the clear course was no cost.
Correct.
Their courses are no cost.
And, and you, could we put that in the minutes of the meeting as well? So that we have it in writing? Yeah.
That the clear cost or no cost or? Absolutely, we can do that.
And as, Julie?
Yes.
Could you also include the, the, what, what, the one course, the hours for the one, uh, the affordable housing? And then the other, the other for the land use?
They're all part of this clear course.
It's all part of, yes.
Okay.
We'll see what, what they have, yes.
Yeah, it was a series, it was a series of three courses on the clear program. And I guess that would comport with the requirements of law.
Steve, was it, um, just a, a talking head or was there, how, how was the course run this?
I mean, it was informational, you know, it was, uh, the speaker was a good speaker. He was a lawyer who obviously does a lot of work in this area. And, I mean, it was interesting because it had a lot of statistics to support the concept of fair housing and, you know, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, sitting in Roxbury, it's sort of very remote to us, but, you know, I understand why they want people to take.
Yeah, and, and just to underscore what Steve and Julie have said, one of them has to be, one of the courses you take must be, uh, on affordable housing or fair housing. That's, that's a requirement. And, um, as I understand it, if, anyone who doesn't complete it, and it's, it's, this is only the land use commissions. And anyone who doesn't complete it can't continue to serve, my understanding.
It's not just land use. It's in several areas and planning and, um, zoning board, you know, it's, there was a list of what organizations people were with.
I think it's zoning, planning, zone, Julie, there's, there's three, right?
It's three. It's, it's the, um, and it, it actually came out of Public Act 2129. And they list the three of zoning, planning, and ZBA.
Yep.
And then after you do your initial training, um, you need to have, be retrained, um, within two years after that. It'll, it'll be, so it won't.
So Julie, um, will u- update us anytime she hears, uh, learns about a new course. She'll send us a notice. But at this point, it sounds like the one that's most accessible and, um, best organized, at least until now, is this, is this one that's, that's, uh, Steve watched, uh, one session of. And I think this is what Kim, what Kim watched. Is that right, Julie?
Yes, that is what Kim watched. Yeah, Kim has, um, attended so far two of them. Is there another one this week? Yeah.
Next, next week, there's another one. But as I said before, it is very important. They're going to repost them. Because the fellow who's the head of it or ran it said he apologized for not reposting yet, the one from last week, which I assume is what Kim watched. And, so they're going to repost them. And I assume you can watch them that way also, whenever you want to.
So they're being. We'll stay on top of it. Uh, we'll check in with you monthly to see who has had their training and who hasn't because, um, we do have to track you guys to make sure you're getting your training in. And we'll be sending out friendly reminders if you haven't gotten to it yet. And when you're all done, you won't hear from us again regarding that.
But Julie, as long as people finish by the end of the year, they're fine.
By the end of the year, there's fine. Yes.
Okay. And Steve, was it interactive at all or was it just?
Yes, it was interactive. In other words, they had the speaker, they had a moderator. And then they had, I don't know what you call it, where people were scrolling comments and questions underneath. And the moderator.
It's called, sorry? Like a chat box.
Yes. And they were, the moderator was then asking some of the ones he thought were relevant or interesting, to the speaker. And then at the end, they opened it up for question and answer. At which point, don't tell anyone, I left. It was like.
So Julie, could you like send a text or something around with, with some of that, the names of?
I will resend that out to everybody.
Great, thank you.
And I'll, and I'll put it in the meeting minutes too. So you have two spots to find it.
So we can't miss it.
They can't miss it. And if you have any questions, just call me on it and we'll send it to you again.
I mean, Margaret, I think if you go on your computer and you do clear program Yukon, you'll find, because that's what, that's basically what the, um, what they identified it as.
Good, thanks.
And Kim shared with Julie, um, um, a couple of pages of description that came, I think, out of this course, um, uh, uh, on the ZBA, which Julie is going to circulate. It's a, it's a good summary of the role, the role and function of the ZBA.
Does it have a good identification of hardship?
I've come to believe there is no such thing, Margaret. Okay, um, anything else on the training?
Okay, I, I, I just to clarify, this is something we're going to have to do every two years.
A- after you're, you've completed this year, yes.
But is it possible that after this, there'll be like a refresher? Or what, what, or is it going to be four hours every, every two years?
Um, I'm not sure. I think it might be two hours, every two years, but don't quote me. I'm going to have to relook at that. But it is something you're going to have to do within, after, in two years after your initial year is completed.
Okay.
But I will, I will find a clarification on that and I will let you know.
Okay. All right. Moving on, um, the next item on the agenda is the chair's report. And, um, I just wanted to update everybody, um, on our, uh, discussions about the, our process for working with the zoning enforcement officer. And, um, you'll recall that at our December meeting, I reported on a discussion that Julie and I had had with John, um, concerning how, uh, how we can best gain his input, on applications that we receive for variances. And at that point, we had agreed that, uh, Hello?
Yeah.
What?
I, I lost you. I didn't hear you.
Okay.
I, I heard you.
Nancy, where did you lose me?
We had a discussion.
So we had a discussion, um, at our December meeting, um, about how we, the best way for us to gain, um, input, uh, um, from John on applications that are before us. And we had talked about, and agreed that, um, the best way to do that was, um, that, uh, if there are applications that we have questions about before, uh, during the meeting, that we would ask him to share with us any discussions he had had with the applicant, or any thoughts he has about the application. Um, and, um, I, I reported on that discussion. And then we had a, a, a longer, the ZBA had a longer and, um, a discussion about how that was going to be implemented. And I think we thought it, we all thought it was a, a good discussion, a productive discussion. Um, subsequent to that, um, Gail McTaggart, told me that she thought that the item where I was reporting to, um, the ZBA, uh, on this discussion, that that item should have been listed separately on the agenda. And that, um, we should have extended an invitation to John to come and participate. And so we've talked about the, talked about it with John. And as you see, I did put this on the item, on, on the agenda as a separate item. And John was notified, um, that he was, um, welcome to come tonight. So that's, that's the procedure we're going to follow going forward.
Oh, okay, Nadette, uh, this is Margaret. I have a question. Did Gail say we should have? Or it would have been a good idea to? Because I went back and I, I read, I listened to the recording. And it seemed to me that our discussion followed naturally, from what was in the agenda. And I'm perfectly fine with as a courtesy, saying in this case, or an identical case, that would have been a, a good idea and more courteous to do it. But when we discuss things, we often do, I'm not quite sure where, where we would be being told we have to stop.
Gail, Gail is saying that, the report, um, the report that we had had, uh, uh, of my discussion with John, should have been listed as an agenda item. And if it wasn't listed as an agenda item in advance, we should have added it to the agenda.
Oh, I see. So the only thing she felt should have been added to the agenda, that was not the discussion about whether it's better to have things signed or not signed. It was, the report of a conversation and she felt that should have been on the agenda?
What I'm saying is. I'm not trying to be evasive. I, I, all I can say is, that Julie and, and John and I had a conversation, um, about the process that we were going to use, to work together. We all agreed on it. And then the ZBA agreed on it. And what Gail is saying is, that the report of, the fact that that conversation had occurred and my reporting on it should have been listed as an item on the agenda.
Okay, and if it's just, when you're reporting on a conversation with another town official, the, the agenda should include, if you're going to report on that, our agenda should include an item that Net will report on her conversation with whoever, whomever. Um, but what, and that seems fine if that's what's wanted. Uh, it would be, it would be best if, if besides you getting stuck with having to do a report, if there was actually a written memo or description of the conversation. But I have no problem with if Gail thinks it's prudent or desirable or courteous, that we put on the agenda reports on conversations you have with other town officials. What I'm concerned about is trying to anticipate when we're discussing an issue, and we talk about what we, you know, what Kim Tester said, or even what Patrick Roy said, and what we think, uh, zoning meant by XYZ, that all of a sudden we're going to have to stop and say, oh, maybe we need to have an agenda item on this. Because I thought that our actual conversation, apart from the report, flowed fairly naturally and predictably from the subject matter.
I'm just telling you what the town attorney advises.
Got it. I understand. And I'm just telling you that, um, um, that, I guess I could, I'm just telling you that this seems to be a special situation. It might actually arise, when you're doing reports of conversations. Um, but, um, that I hope that the, notification or putting it on the agenda will be in narrow cases and not, when we're having a discussion of, um, processes or law or whatever, that we would have to stop and say, wait, do we need to have a separate agenda item on this?
What Gail is saying is that we shouldn't, that, that it's better to not have those discussions, unless they're listed as an agenda item.
But that means we can't talk about, you know, anything with zoning or planning or Patrick or, without putting it on the agenda if we're going to say anything about, wow, why don't we just have an agenda? Whoa, that's going to be interesting.
Yeah, that sounds very limiting.
Because it does come up, you know, it does come up where we've discussed, speaking to so and so, we're doing this, or, you know, remember?
My, my understanding of, of, of what happened, uh, and, and it's pretty kind of a fragmented at this point. But it was really, um, a discussion of the role of the ZEO and the interfacing with ZBA. And, um, you know, I can understand why if we're going to discuss a process that's occurring, between two different, um, you know, groups in our, in our community here, between the ZEO and the ZBA, that that might be an agenda item. But I, I think too that, the discussion started at a different point and then evolved into a, a deeper discussion. I, I don't really remember how it went. But I think.
So I just wanted to say one day.
Margaret, wait.
Okay, thank you. Will do.
I think Steve's trying to talk.
What I remember of this is that the discussion evolved because a lot of people don't go to zoning. After they speak to John, they go right to the ZBA. And it was how to handle, the information, have some formality. And it was about having something written from John to basically talk about, what had gone on with the particular landowner. Um, so I thought that just flowed from basically, the fact that, at least in the short time I've been here, there seemed to be a number of situations where, uh, I remember the wall, which was where it came out of that application, about the wall on the river, on, um, Wellers Bridge River. And, you know, the fact that there really had never been any prior application, other than this speaking to John. And I, for one, as a lawyer, felt a little uneasy about the. And I, for one, as a lawyer, felt a little uneasy about the fact that it's just people talking what someone said, as opposed to having some sort of written communication. But that's where this whole thing germinated from, and then it just sort of spun with a lot of people, I think, getting upset.
And if I could just add, Steve is right, and I, I, that's how it began, and as I recall, we had asked for um, what Steve would make him feel less uneasy was aside on. And that in the conversation subsequently that Nanette had, that appeared not to be, you know, necessarily considered a good idea. So we were talking about, well, is it a good idea or not? And can we have some kind of side on?
Wait, Margaret, hang on, I got kicked off, so I did not hear, Ja- John, I, John, I see you on the talk.
Yes, I'm here, please.
Could we please go to a gallery view, get off this, the.
That's up to you, that's up to you.
That's fine.
Actually, you know what, let me, uh.
Can I suggest an executive session?
No. Just wait a minute, please.
To, could.
Steve, could you, oh, okay, Julie, would you take us off of Gal, uh, it, put us in gallery view?
Thank you.
Um, Steve, I didn't hear what you said, because I got kicked off. So, you just summarize what you said again?
Yeah, in other words, this all came about because we had, as I recollect, the application for the wall fence, whatever it was, um, on River Road by Wallace Bridge Road. And the, what was concerning was, which I didn't really realize, that it had never gone to zoning, in other words, I believe the landowner spoke to John, John gave him his opinion, and they came to the zoning board. But I was a little uncomfortable that then there seems to be no record. That essentially they're relating what John said, or, you know, this, and, and I just felt that I, I don't remember who made the original suggestion, but the idea of having something in writing about those type of applications might make a lot of sense.
Okay, so let me just, let, let me just try to clarify this. The, the process, the, by which, the, we talked about, by which we were gonna work with John, we've all agreed to it, there's, there's, uh, there's no issue. The issue is about the way the discussion, the manner in which the discussion occurred. And I would ask you to, to please allow us to try this, to try this new process and to try to be a little bit more reg, um, more dis, I'll try to be a little bit more disciplined about making sure things are on the agenda, and I would just ask you to please let us do this and move on.
But I, are you asking us, Nanette, to not have conversations as a board, uh, unless it's on the agenda?
You have to give me an example, Karen, I don't know what it would be.
Well, I, I think if I beg, the, the wall fence, whatever it was, is a perfect example, because the landowner was sent to us, John had had communications with them. And it all, to me at least, and maybe it's some practicing law some of the years, came across as sort of like, I never really had a feel for what maybe John had said, his reasoning, what these people had said.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop us, okay, because.
Hello?
I don't, I, I.
I think we left.
Let me ask, let me, let me ask you again to let us try this system. And the next time we come to an issue where we want to have a discussion, and we're not sure whether it should have been on the agenda or not, we'll deal with it, we'll handle it, when there's an example in front of us, okay?
Okay.
Please, please.
Please, okay, this is Margaret, okay.
Okay.
Sounds good.
I, I think it's, I think it's only fair, um, and, and, uh, to the other commissioners, um, if we're going to be discussing some process that involves them, to have them, uh, at least know that that's gonna be on our agenda, and if they want to come and to discuss it, that's fine.
John?
Yes?
Is there anything you want, is there anything you want to add?
Well, yeah, I have serious concern, because tonight went off the rails, just like the last time it went off the rails. So at the moment, I'd rather compose my thoughts than speaking off the cuff, so, um, I'll reserve that for a later time, thank you.
Okay. Um, moving on then. Um, on. Thank you, on, um, Monday night, the zoning board, uh, took up our letter um, on the issue of the wall, um. I wasn't, Margaret and I think Sue were on, I, I didn't realize that I was gonna be asked to present, but I, I was, and I just briefly reviewed the issues in the letter, um, the board, uh, the zoning board under, the zoning commission understood, I think, um, um, immediately what our concerns were, um, about the definition of, of fences and walls, and they decided to take it up, and they, uh, I think that Jim Conway said, we obviously have some work to do on this, um, they were very appreciative, um, thanked us for calling it to their attention, thought it was a good example of us working together. Um, and so, um, they are going to take it up and try to clarify those definitions. Margaret or Sue, do you want to add anything?
No, you did, you did a very good job of explaining.
Yes.
Um, so I think that all went very well, I think the process went well, um, and hopefully they will, they will, um, you know, take some time to make changes in the zoning commission, in the zoning regs, so. Um, any questions about that?
No.
Okay, then the only, uh, other business. Okay, then the only other item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the January nineteenth meeting. Uh, do I have a motion?
I moved, I moved to approve the minutes, Margaret.
My second.
Discussion. All in favor?
All right.
Hi.
Opposed. Abstentions, okay, minutes are approved, uh, and with that, I'm going to adjourn the meeting. Um, at what time?
About eight oh one.
Eight oh one, okay, thank you, everybody.
Good night.
Bye.
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 Good night, Nanette.
Bye.
Bye.